Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, November 18th, 2025. Would the clerk please take the role?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith. Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavell, President.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, I believe you have some special guests here this morning?
Yes, if we could have everyone here from Community Day School come up and join us at the front to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
So come all the way up front. And then we'll start when you lead us off.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. If you all, if you want to stay with us, do you want them here for the proclamation? Okay. So our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend?
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Our next order of business is proclamations. If you all can stay.
They don't have a.
Oh, you don't want, okay. You all can go. Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. Thank you. And our next order of business is proclamations, and we'll turn it over to Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you very much. If everyone here for the Youth Steering Committee of Humane Action Pennsylvania could come up and join. It's Youth Day in the city of Pittsburgh in City Council. Come up and join us up here. Hello, hello. Hi again. Welcome.
All right. And I have to say, before we get started, this proclamation was drafted by the young people here today in collaboration with our office. So we're really proud to work with them on this. Spent some time together a few weeks back talking about the role of government and advocacy. So whereas, the Youth Steering Committee of Humane Action Pennsylvania is dedicated to promoting compassion and environmental stewardship through hands-on projects that benefit both people and wildlife. And whereas, Youth for Humane Action Day encourages youth and families to champion compassion and create meaningful change through advocacy, education, and action that supports the well-being of animals in our shared environment. And whereas, pollinators such as bees, butterflies, and hummingbirds are essential to the health of our ecosystems and play a vital role in sustaining food production and biodiversity. And whereas, pollinator habitat loss, pesticide use, and climate change create an urgent need to support conservation. And whereas, the city of Pittsburgh needs more spaces to promote ecological growth and support for animals. And whereas, we must take action to support our local environments. And whereas, a pollinator garden benefits everyone in the community. And whereas, establishing pollinator gardens provides safe habitats, increases native plant growth, and educates community members, especially young people, about environmental responsibility and conservation. Whereas, this initiative reflects our ongoing commitment to education, sustainability, and community engagement by inspiring others to take action in protecting our planet's natural resources. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh recognizes the dedication and hard work of the Youth Steering Committee of Humane Action Pennsylvania, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare November 18th, 2025 as Youth for Humane Action Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. So what I would love to do is have everyone briefly introduce themselves. We'll pass this mic around. Is this on?
I think it's on the bottom.
And if not, we can, oh, there we go. Magic touch. So if everyone could say their, their name. Is it working? Okay. If you can come up here and just say your name and where you live, that would be great. And just introduce yourselves.
My name is Kyritika Romlingam, and I am a sophomore at North Allegheny.
My name is Arlie Guzzo, and I live in Bloomfield.
My name is Avery Strom, and I am a junior at Oakland Catholic.
My name is Bailey Pendleton, and I'm a senior at Seton LaSalle Catholic High School.
My name is Penelope Bard, and I'm a senior at Pittsburgh SciTech.
My name is Kenneth Christian, and I'm a senior at SciTech.
My name is Brianna Wiggins, and I'm a senior at Perry.
I'm Shannon Dickerson. I'm the Director of Operations at Humane Action Pennsylvania, and I just wanted to thank all of you for having us this morning. We're so proud of this group of students. And I did have two students who just wanted to say a brief couple of words. Come on up.
On behalf of Humane Action Pennsylvania's 2025-2026 Youth Steering Committee, we thank the City Council and Erica Strasburger for recognizing our efforts of creating a pollinator garden.
As members of the Youth Steering Committee, we work at the intersection of human and animal issues with the mission of creating social change through attainable and sustainable goals. This recognition reminds us that when working together, we can create real change. We are all so honored to be here and are grateful for this opportunity and experience. Thank you all again.
Thank you. And as I mentioned, I spent some time with, with these wonderful young people a few weeks ago and, you know, hearing what their future aspirations are, the advocacy they're already engaging in. The future is in good hands. So I'm really happy that you're here today. Can we get all members up here for a photo? We can come up here. This council member should come in here. The council members will come in.
And we have two to be read into the record.
Councilwoman Mosley presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare November 11th, 2025 to be Veterans of the Homewood Healthy Active Living Center Day in the city of Pittsburgh. And Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend the winners of the 2025 Greenfield Community Awards and congratulates Greenfield Organized Against Drugs and the Greenfield Community Club on a successful year.
May we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Both proclamations have been approved. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state, the comments are limited matters of concern, official action or deliberation which may be forced by the council, profanity will not be permitted. After you are called, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Elena Zaitsov. I do not see her online this morning. We will come back if she joins. Our next registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Oakland, Ultrono, Neighborhood, Forense Italia, Jacob Stott. Neighborhood, Weimar Deutschland. I'm a Global Intelligence Society candidate for President of the United States, 2028, Global Information Intelligence Network.net. Info Intel II, optimality over ideology in government is the key for me. Concerns of council include local government and city neighborhoods, a concern that I have. Via Initiative Three, local no-party government, and Initiative Five, neighborhoods. I have a five-Q approach to information and intelligence in my book, Global Intelligence. On 10 November 2025, with frenzied Ganeyites chanting, "Ganey, Ganey, Ganey", a breach of decorum, Mr. Lavell. Mr. Ganey insisted on 90 neighborhoods, 90, 90, all 90 neighborhoods. Did Mr. Ganey establish a network connecting these neighborhoods? Not to my knowledge. QIPU five function II. There is no Pittsburgh Rule Charter, Home Rule Charter, PHRC, codification, and no Pittsburgh City Code that I know of that exists that prevents neighborhooders from organizing to establish their own neighborhood council, elected solely by individuals in the neighborhood, NCE, or preventing the Pittsburgh City Neighborhood Network established by me in 2025, the PCNN. I began this process in 2017. No, nothing preventing us from doing meetings in all 90 Pittsburgh neighborhoods to offer the best information and intelligence on the NCE. Quantum Function Base II Level One. The NCE is to protect the boundary of a neighborhood. Quintessence Function Base Low Level Formal II Level Two. The NCC is to preserve the identity, Isuru, Ichi Isuru, as Asian Nahuango, of a neighborhood. Quora Function Supra Basic, High Formal II Level Three. An NCE is to promote the advantage of visitation and investment in a neighborhood. And I encourage in the Hill, the Victory Center, to be reopened and re-energized for this reason. Qualia Function is to establish the council in the neighborhood for vote-by-voter verification for whom, so that individuals in the neighborhood can check their votes.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chris Maury.
Good morning. I'm Chris Maury, Squirrel Hill, District Eight, and I'm here with Inform Up with 160 survey responses covering the issues discussed by council last week. On the ongoing discussion of expanding vendor licenses, we asked that the previous draft or the current draft of the legislation does not specify if one person or business can hold multiple vendor licenses. What should the policy be? 23% said that we should allow for two to three licenses, allowing for modest growth without enabling monopolizing prime locations. 21% said that there should be a tiered system, so one permit, and then after six months of demonstrated compliance, allowing for more. 19% said allowing only one license. And 13% or 12.4% unlimited with conditions, so proving that you're operating at the different locations. One resident in Bloomfield said, "For vendor licenses, I prefer a permissive model first and wait to hear from vendors if there's abuse and regulate after that." With respect to the new contract for electronics recycling and hazardous waste removal, we asked, or do you agree or disagree with this statement? Council should not approve the vendor contract before the cost to residents has been established regarding the fee schedules for scheduling home pickup. 78% agreed or strongly agreed with this statement, with 9% somewhat or strongly disagreeing. A resident in Squirrel Hill were all for electronic and household hazardous waste, chemical recycling. But independent of that, I do not think that the cost to homeowners should be, or I think that the cost to homeowners should be known before approving contracts. This should apply to any service. A member, a resident in South Side, said, "I don't know the details of the proposal, but if their approval was based entirely on merit, that's fine. Fees are often negotiable after the contract is signed. But if the fee schedule was included in the RFP, then we should not move forward." Roughly paraphrasing. Finally, with respect to the moving forward with Phase Two of the composting program, we asked, "Which, the city aims to divert 90% of waste by 2030. Which composting collection method would you most likely use?" 41% said curbside pickup, even with a fee. 26% said backyard composting, providing equipment for that. Year-round drop-off locations in a facility, 16%, and drop-off at farmers markets and other community sites, 10%. One resident from Brookline, "Even with additional fees, the easiest ask of put it out with the trash will get the most adoption, most people on board. It would be an easy adjustment to add composting." And I'll send out the full report over email. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lawrence Torres.
I have some material. Am I able to hand this out first?
If you hand it to the clerk.
Okay, thank you. First time doing this, so a little bit nervous. Good morning, council members, community leaders, and fellow residents. My name is Lawrence Michael Torres. I'm the father of two daughters, one son, the original author of the Jackpot Relief Program, CEO and co-founder of Ticket Monsters, and a local business owner of Ideas and Ink Tattoo Studio. I stand before you as a citizen, parent, and a local worker who hears from the people every day. Today, I want to speak about something that has the power to uplift millions of Americans, including thousands right here in our city. As you know, the Mega Millions and Powerball jackpots continue to soar toward the billion-dollar mark. In fact, we're approaching that threshold right now with the Powerball. But for all that excitement, the truth is simple. Very few people ever see a direct benefit. So that's what inspired the Jackpot Relief Program. Here's the core idea. When the Powerball or the Mega Millions exceeds $1 billion, the overflow funds, the portion above $1 billion, would be directly distributed back to the American people, 18 years and over, coast-to-coast, instead of just one person winning. So for the example, when the jackpot reaches 1.2 billion, .2 billion, $200 million, we go to 200,000 Americans in the form of $1,000 each, while the main winner of $1 billion still takes home roughly $500 million after taxes, American dream. At 1.3 billion, $300 million surplus, 300,000 Americans, $1,000 each. If we do this five, six, seven times throughout the year, potentially millions of Americans receive that relief. Program provides immediate assistance to seniors, veterans, families, working individuals, people who need the support right now. It's a direct impact. Second, every dollar returned to the citizens flows directly into our local economy. People spend it on groceries, gas, prescriptions, childcare, housing, services right here in our city. That money gets circulated as opposed to just getting locked up with one winner. And the third, this restores the lottery's original mission, which is to support the public good. So when the lottery was created, it was meant to help seniors, veterans, and homeless in the communities. The Jackpot Relief Program revives that purpose. The idea will work. And importantly, this is not a partisan idea. This is not about left or right. It's about fairness, community support, and economic common sense. I didn't create this program for personal gain. I am not selling this idea. I created it because I truly want to help the people. And because real solutions are built from the ground up, this is why I'm standing here today. So I'm asking the council for something simple yet powerful. Your public support, your voice, your willingness to help advance a program that can change millions of lives nationwide annually. And we're building momentum with this. Across the country, leadership and leadership of the city and the city level is a critical step. If you'd like to learn more, I encourage everyone here or anyone listening to Google Jackpot Relief Program. Sign the petition today. I'm the only one that's discussing this topic on Google. And I respectfully ask that this council to strongly consider endorsing the program publicly and helping us. I hit the button. What sends a powerful message that our community stands united in prioritizing relief opportunity.
Sir, your time expired. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Emily Sawyer.
Good morning, Emily Sawyer. I live in Manchester. If the City Council is considering renewing a contract with ShotSpotter, I would employ you not to do so. Critical reports about ShotSpotter have recently come from the city of Chicago's Inspector General, Northwestern School of Law's MacArthur Justice Center, Vice News, and the Associated Press. These are all easily accessible, so you can do research. ShotSpotter is deployed overwhelmingly in communities of color, including in Pittsburgh and Allegheny County, which already disproportionately bear the brunt of a heavy police presence. This is obviously circular logic. The placement of sensors in some neighborhoods but not others means that the police will detect more incidents, real or false, in places where the sensors are located. That can distort gunfire statistics and creates a circular statistical justification for overpolicing in communities of color. ShotSpotter does not address the root causes of gun violence. ShotSpotter diverts funds from community solutions that don't involve surveillance and incarceration. If the City Council is considering discontinuing contracts related to the Pittsburgh 2050 Comprehensive Planning Process, I would implore you not to do so. The Pittsburgh 2050 Comprehensive Planning Process has been an enormous lift, and abandoning it now would be dismissive and destructive. These meetings I have attended have been some of the best meetings that I have ever attended in 10 years of going to meetings, both here in Pittsburgh and in Austin, Texas. Shutting down this process would be just one more example of the leadership of Pittsburgh, ignoring people while giving developers and corporations everything they ask for. There are issues with the RCO process and system, and that makes the Pittsburgh 2050 process all the more important. Lastly, this is my personal bone to pick. I think that all the construction happening in Pittsburgh right now is super offensive to residents. It's getting ridiculous. North Avenue on the north side, traffic is a disaster. The lights haven't been retimed for the new traffic patterns. There is no parking, and what parking does exist is taken up by construction vehicles. Sidewalks are impassable, meaning residents with strollers, wheelchairs, students making their way to and from school don't have safe, accessible passageways. The fact that so many repairs needed to be made indicates that the city is choosing to delay maintenance to a significant degree. The fact that you magically found the money before the draft because strangers are going to come to our city means that the money has always been available. It just wasn't important to make these repairs for the people who live here. Shame on all of you. There is always plenty of money to do whatever we choose to do. That means if we are not appropriately maintaining our public infrastructure, but we are, for example, maintaining a police force that is larger than recommended by consultants we paid for to tell us how many police to have, that is a choice. This is absurd. Do better.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mandy.
Good morning, council, fellow residents. My name is Fat Mandy. I am an Allegheny County Democratic Committee Woman. I'm a locally-based jazz vocalist and music educator. I live in Allentown. I'm here today because, like you for years, I was told that Pittsburgh was the most livable city. But in truth, this is just bold lies and propaganda. Do you remember that study, the one we paid a lot of money for to learn what generations of black people could have just told us? It's actually one of the worst places in America for black women to live. So I think that we should finally make Pittsburgh the most livable city for all of our residents and not just the ones who look like me. The Comprehensive Plan was part of that dream, and the dream is actually becoming real. It's my understanding that in our 200-plus years of history, we have never had a citywide comprehensive plan that has ever worked to engage all of its citizens. This plan was created by the Ganey administration, and it is the first, and it's three-quarters of the way done. Ironically, it was built largely by black women collectively organizing. So I do not understand why City Council is trying to cancel it. I don't understand for the life of me how there is any downside to inclusionary zoning and funding programs getting guns off of our streets. Working-class people deserve to have a say in this city's future too, not just the developers and landlords. What does it mean when we leave our communities and neighborhoods behind? I want to live in the city, the neighborhood that Mr. Rogers told me to believe in, the one where all of us are welcome and considered, not just the ones we're buying and selling our communities to line their already fat pockets. Because the only pocket I want to stay in is the one with the groove to move our city forward and not backward. So I say unto you, my fellow citizens of Pittsburgh, please, if you are so inclined, sing with me. It's a beautiful day in this neighborhood, a beautiful day for a neighbor. Won't you be mine?
Ms.
Won't you be mine? I know, I'm not allowed to sing. I didn't know.
Please use your words to address council.
Okay, well, I think y'all get the picture. I appreciate you, and I concede my time. You know what I'm trying to say? Neighbors are people who are close to us and friends of the people who are close to our hearts. I'd like to all think of you as my neighbors and my friends, and friends talk to each other and are inclusionary and get the guns off the street and don't try to shoot the plan in the foot while it's halfway almost through the finish line. Thank you. Go.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Demko.
Hi, all. You probably know who I am. I'm David Demko. I lived on the north side at 1303 Boyle Street for the past 26 years. I promise I won't be doing any singing here. For the last 15 years, I've been the Assistant Director of Scenic Pittsburgh. And Scenic Pittsburgh is a chapter of Scenic America, which is an organization that was inspired by Lady Bird Johnson and the Highway Beautification Act. Lady Bird wanted to plant flowers along the highways, and she did not like billboards. Scenic Pittsburgh believes that billboards are a blight. We oppose all forms of blight, whether it be litter or graffiti, but especially billboards. Probably the only organization, the only national organization that has fighting opposing billboard proliferation in our mission statement. So I want to talk to you a little bit about billboards, and I'm not talking about any billboards. I'm talking about electronic billboards. Nobody's building the vinyl ones anymore. They cost too much. You got to send people out there to change them. You know how efficient an electronic billboard can be in changing advertisements. The future of the billboard industry is electronic billboards, and they're 10 times worse than conventional billboards. First of all, they're a blight on the scenic environment. A study in Philadelphia showed they actually lower property values in neighborhoods that have prolific billboards. They're a public safety hazard, a driving hazard. Old people and young people are particularly vulnerable to distraction that electronic billboards cause. There are a number of studies that show even, great range of differences in accidents, even fatal accidents on highways with billboards and highways without billboards. I'm not even sure why we allow electronic billboards as a distraction on our highways. They create light pollution, which upsets the bio rhythms of plants and animals and keeps people awake, and obscures the night sky. The one thing you have to worry about with billboards is they're protected by the First Amendment. That means they can, they can put anything they want on that billboard once you allow them to have a billboard. They could be hateful messages. They could be messages about the casino, messages about advertising, the gentleman's club. But these are the kind of advertisements that we want for our youth, to create a wholesome and a healthful neighborhood. for our youth, to create a wholesome and healthful neighborhood. Billboards don't pay local business taxes, and they're bad for the local economy. The mom-and-pop stores that we cherish so much in Pittsburgh, they can't afford billboard advertising, it's the big national chains that dominate billboards. Pittsburgh has over 900 billboards, two-thirds of them were there before the rule changed. Remember, if you allow these billboards in, they will be there forever. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Loretta Payne.
Good morning, everyone, my name's Loretta Payne, and I am a lifelong Hill District resident. I am here to talk about how we should not privatize our water in the city of Pittsburgh. I'm here representing Pittsburgh Human Rights City Alliance and the Hill District Consensus Groups. Around the country, utilities are getting privatized or otherwise managed in undemocratic ways, and we know this is always bad for human rights. We need to protect transparency and democratic oversight of water and other infrastructures that are essential to realizing our human rights. Between Pittsburgh residents and city council, we are a fearless city. Together, we can create the Pittsburgh Water Advisory Council of city residents, council members, and others to have transparency and community input. Ladies and gentlemen, just as housing is a human right, water's a human right as well. In 2010, the United Nations General Assembly recognized the right to safe, clean drinking water and sanitation as a human right. I implore you to think about this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Miriam Perez-Putnam. Is Miriam with us? If not, our next speaker is Amy Zeiss.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful, thank you, great timing, because I have a work meeting in two minutes. My name is Amy Zeiss, I live in the Beechfield neighborhood. I signed up to speak today because actually I saw a call to action on a social media platform last night, asking for people to come here and defend the Comprehensive Plan. And I am personally a resident, I am working class myself, and I've been less than enthusiastic about the way the process has played out. As someone who's really involved in my local neighborhood, I was unaware of any of the events that happened, and we heard several council members say basically the same thing at the post-agenda. So it seems clear that the contractors are not fulfilling the statement of work that needs to be delivered. I'm also appalled that it's being claimed that 30,000 residents have participated in this, because it's been explained that they're not counting people or individuals, they're counting red dots on a piece of, you know, Styrofoam, like they're counting the number of responses to a survey. People could have interacted 30 times and be counted as 30 different people. Not only that, every single session I've been in has included people who are not residents of Pittsburgh. I was in a session with the mayor of Homestead. Why are they being counted as a resident of Pittsburgh who's being contacted for this Comprehensive Plan? And honestly, it was the language used by those supporting the plan that really drove me to come here today, because it was One Hood, Pittsburghers Republic Transit, and another group who claimed that this is a handout to corporations, when it's not. If we want to follow the money here, One Hood received money for doing outreach and consulting work. So they're protecting their own pockets right now, not the people. And I'm bewildered at the expense of the plan, and I would love to see something actually fruitful come out of this process. So I want to thank councilmember Coghill for introducing some measures to perhaps reallocate some of this funding, if possible, and bring the work in-house. And I urge council to do so, if possible. And thank you for your time today, I have to go.
That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, also provide your name and neighborhood for the record.
Good morning, my name is Javon F. Brown, I live at 715 Mercer Street, that's the 190 apartments in Katy Wears tires at the top of Bedford. Last week, I want to apologize to Austin White Cell. When I went and was politicking or campaigning with Testador out in District 5, there was a young boy who had this sign, and he was doing a survey, and what his survey was, whether you liked gold or silver. I remember joking with him, I said, "Gold's gonna win," and it did, 38 to 32. He was very professional to be nine years old. His mother said that he's been going to the polls since like three, with surveys of this. Now, I think what the survey was, is just that showing that you can have your own opinion. Now, this was just about silver and gold, but I had said to Austin, I said he was dynamite, "You are fantastic." Do you see how his mother encourages him to have his own opinion? I thought back to when I brought my five-year-old grandchild, and she spoke, and Reverend, well, you didn't call him Reverend Burgess, I thought it should have been called Conflin Burgess, said that it was not the time or the place. Do you understand that? He's saying that she cannot come and speak, it's not the time or the place, but this mother sees how we should teach them to have their own opinion. You don't have to go with everybody else, try to learn what should be the right answer. I was really upset that last week, because I was talking, and you started talking, and you don't really understand, it's very distracting. I only got three minutes, and you just got hours, and you talk amongst yourself, on the computers, on the phone, while we're here, three minutes. I still, still upset when Ms. Gross and Perduda made the decision that they would not come into our neighborhood when we wanted to talk about the police, and we had to go to Lawrenceville, two buses, whereas if you came from Lawrenceville and even from the Hill, one bus each. I am very upset, because I felt that because of what they did, we had the car owner, the policeman came, tasered him in his business, that's the same as being tasered in your home, you understand that? And his wife has a business next door. He pays taxes to this city.
Therese Taylor, that's the identity theft name change. I've recently discovered, I'm Esther, in the Bible, reborn as Hadessa. Imagine that. Now we know why y'all went through so many limps, to hide my identity. Can't hide my identity, God knows me by name. Imagine that. Let's talk about it, knowing God's will. Lord, dear God, thank you for being my refuge in times of suffering. Please help me rely on you in your word for strength and to persevere. We learn God's will by spending time in his presence. Prayer, it works, I promise you. The more you pray, the more peace you have in your life. The peace that surpasses all understanding, not the peace and quiet you all may think I'm talking about. The key to knowing God's heart is having a relationship with him. The only way to have a relationship with God is to pray, spend time with him. You spend all your time with everything and everybody else, why is he not worthy of some of it? My mother sold me as a sex slave, imagine that. And every man that I've slept with is now pining and fighting to be mine. I want none of them. None of them have a chance, a second chance with men that knew about this? Like, really? It's a no. If I could say H-E-L-L, I would, I'll put other words in front of it, just for the emphasis on how much of a strong no it is. "Justice comes from Esther, 734. Let my life be given me at my petition, and my people at my request. For we are sold, and I and my people, to be destroyed, to be slain, and to perish." None of these things happen to me, I'm still here, standing on the promises of God. Let's hear one. Today's promise comes from worshiping God. Praise and worship are like cereal milk, they go together, you can't have one without the other. Deuteronomy 6:13-14 says, "Respect the Lord your God; you must worship him, and make your promises only in his name. Do not worship other gods as the people around you do, because the Lord your God is a jealous God. The people around you are like these people here who practice voodoo." Thank you, Lord, in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll turn to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilwoman Sharlin, Chair of Human Resources.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Councilperson Sharlin presents Bill Number 2480, Resolution Amending Resolution 514 of 2022, which authorizes the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional service agreement with Rulis and Bocicchio LLC for the purpose of providing legal services in connection with the defense of certain workers' compensation matters and claims brought against the city by increasing the cost by $900,000 for three additional years of services, for a new not-to-exceed amount of $3,600,000.
And Councilwoman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Coghill presents Bill Number 2481, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with Norfolk Southern's Safety First Grant for the purpose of receiving grant funds in the amount of $15,000 to purchase non-florinated firefighting foam. Bill 2482, Resolution Authorizing and Directing the Mayor, Solicitor, Director of Planning, and Director of Office of Management and Budget pursuant to 204K of the Home Rule Charter to provide appropriate notice and terminate a contract with Saseki and Common Cause Consultants per Article 3.2, termination of the agreement. Bill 2483, Resolution Authorizing and Directing the Mayor, Solicitor, Director of Planning, and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget pursuant to 204K of the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter to provide appropriate notice and termination of a contract with HR&amp;A Advisors and Urban AC LLC per Article 3.2, termination of the agreement. And Bill 2495, Resolution Amending Resolution 659 of 2025, which authorizes a cooperation agreement or agreements with the City of Pittsburgh Equipment and Leasing Authority for the purchase and leasing of vehicles, equipment, and accessories, equipment support, infrastructure, and professional services in fiscal year 2025 by increasing the authorized amount by $165,000 to purchase vehicles and equipment for the Department of Public Works for a new total of $8,914,319.37.
And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Mosley presents Bill Number 2484, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh to document local cooperation and the Housing Authority's agreement to make payments in lieu of taxes for the 11-unit deal, a scattered-site public housing development.
And Councilwoman Kell Smith, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services, she has no papers, so I'll move us to Councilwoman Strausberger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilperson Strausberger presents Bill Number 2485, Resolution Amending Resolution 63 of 2025, which provided for an agreement or agreements with the Center for Hearing and Deaf Services, Inc., and Global Wordsmiths by increasing the authorized spend for Global Wordsmiths by $19,000 for services through June 2026, for a new total cost not to exceed $117,000 over four and a half years. Bill 2486, Resolution Amending Resolution 413 of 2025, which authorizes the Mayor and the City Solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Block &amp; Associates for Legal Services in Connection with the Current City Construction Project by increasing the contract amount by $20,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $60,000 over one year. Bill 2487, Resolution Amending Resolution 519 of 2025, which authorizes the Mayor and the City Solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Buchanan, Ingersoll, and Rooney PC for legal consulting services in connection with complex real property litigation and related matters by increasing the contract amount by $55,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $130,000 over one year. Bill 2488, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the Pittsburgh Community Reinvestment Group in the Amount of $75,000 for Community Reinvestment Analysis for City Depositories for 2022, 23, and 24. Bill 2489, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Belfour USA Group, Inc., in the Amount of $33,314.96 for hauling and clean-out services related to properties in the pilot home-buying program.
And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 2490, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of ServPro in the Amount of $8,472.02 for Water Restoration Services in the City-County Building.
And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Non-House Economic Development.
No new papers, Mr. President.
And on behalf of myself, I have two communications.
Council President Lavelle presents Bill Number 2491, Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting to City Council the attached status update from the Grants Office for the weekend at November 14, 2025. And Bill 2492, Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, as per the City Code, Chapter 166, Donation of City Personal Property states, "The Office of Management and Budget would like to inform the City Council that the Department of Innovation and Performance will donate audio equipment to Pittsburgh Creative and Performing Arts with a total value of $1,260."
Need a motion to read, receive, and file?
Still moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, bills as a member of receiving and file. Our next order of business, reports of committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strausberger, representing Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilperson Strausberger presents Bill Number 2474, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for November 12, 2025 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2433, Ordinants Amending and Supplementing, excuse me, the Pittsburgh City Code Title I Administrative Article IX, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities, Chapter 178A, Youth Commission, and Youth Council, by strengthening the commission's alignment with the City of Pittsburgh structure to ensure that it reflects the diversity of young people across all neighborhoods and communities, thus prioritizing the lived experiences of Pittsburgh's youth to inform the decisions of the city's elected leadership. Bill 2434, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to submit a Keystone Recreation Park and Conservation Fund Grant Application to the Pennsylvania Office of Commonwealth Libraries for the replacement of the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning and roofing systems at the Carnegie Library at Pittsburgh's Squirrel Hill branch in the amount not to exceed $400,000 for this stated purpose. And Bill 2471, Resolution Transferring the Amount of $300,000 Within the 2025 Operating Budget Expenditures from the Department of Finance, Debt Services, Interest to the Department of Public Works Bureau of Facilities, Property Services, Maintenance for Playground Upgrades.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith. Mrs. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received illegally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick, presenting the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 2475, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for November 12, 2025 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2436, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with Noble Environmental Specialty Recycling for programming, collection, and recycling of household hazardous chemicals and electronic waste for city residents' use at city cost not to exceed $571,250 over a period of two years with three separate options for one-year renewal.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received illegally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That moves us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, presenting the Committee on Land Use Economic Development.
Aye, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 2476, Reported a Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for November 12, 2025 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2149, Ordinants Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning Code, Article V, Use Regulations, Chapter 911, Primary Uses in Chapter 912, Accessory Uses, and Article VIII, Review and Enforcement, Chapter 922, Development Review Procedures, all to amend outdoor retail sales and service primary and accessory uses. Bill 2150, Ordinants Amending and Supplementing the City Code at Title VII, Business Licensing, Article III, Sales Businesses, Chapter 719, Vendors and Peddlers, by repealing Chapter 719 in its entirety and replacing it with a new Chapter 719 to update Pittsburgh's vending program. And Bill 2437, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning to enter into an agreement with Connect to complete work as part of the Soil Mill PGHs, our Common Ground Initiative, in an amount not to exceed $125,000.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received illegally required numbers of votes is passed finally. And finally, Councilman Cory Mosley, presenting the Committee on Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 2477, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for November 12, 2025 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2426, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 1212 Smallman Street at no cost to the city. Bill 2427, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement or agreements with the County of Allegheny to support children, youth, and family programs administered by the Department of Human Services at a total cost not to exceed $2,400,000 over two years. Bill 2428, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land between the URA of Pittsburgh and Bridge Side Point One LLC or related entity for the sale of Block 29F, lots 26, 28, and 80, Fourth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Second Avenue and Technology Drive, Council District Number Three, at no cost to the city. Bill 2429, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land between the URA of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Land Bank for the sale of Block 10N, lots 287 and 288 in the Fifth Ward, City of Pittsburgh, Center Avenue, Council District Six, at no cost to the city. Bill 2430, Resolution Amending Resolution 469 of 2003, effective June 18, 2003, entitled, "Resolution Authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh to Acquire All of the City's Right Title and Interests, if any, and Into the Publicly Owned Property in the City of Pittsburgh, Council District Six, Residential Construction, Fifth Ward, Block 10K, Lot 21, 2249 Mahon Street, Block 10K, Lot 25, 2241 Mahon Street, Block 10K, Lot 27, 2237 Mahon Street, Block 10K, Lot 28, 2235 Mahon Street, by removing Parcel 10K, 21, 22, 49 Mahon Street, Council District Six, at no cost to the city." Bill 2431, Resolution Amending Resolution 174 of 2020, effective April 22, 2020, entitled, "Resolution Authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh to Acquire All of the City's Right Title and Interests, if any, and Into the Publicly Owned Properties in the Fifth Ward, City of Pittsburgh, in the D Registry Office, known as Block 10K, Lots 48, 54, Block 10L, Lots 17, 18, 24, 25, 26A, 26B, 31, 39, 249, 250, 251, 282, 284, 286, and 288, Block 10N, Lot 340, Block 10P, Lots 119, 133, 134A, 135, 136, 137, 138, 211, 212, 213, 214, 217, 223, 224, 225, 227, 231, 234, 236, 241, Block 10R, Lot 70, 71A, 72, 73, 75, 75C, 76, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 94, 112, 113, 114, 120, 135, 144, 147, and 150, Council District Number Six, Mixed Use New Construction Rehabilitation Commercial Affordable Housing by removing Parcels 10P, 134A, 10P, 135, 10P, 136, 10P, 137, and 10P, 138, La Place Street and Center Avenue, Council District Number Six, at no cost to the city."
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received illegally required numbers of votes is passed finally, and that takes us to motions of resolutions. Is there anything from members? If not, that takes us to meeting announcements. This afternoon at 12 o'clock, council will reconvene a cablecast public hearing on Bill 202220 relative to Pittsburgh Water Asset Transfer. Speaker registration will close at 10 a.m. This afternoon at 1 o'clock, council will hold an executive sessions on Bills 2450, 2486, and 2487 as a rate to litigation. Also this afternoon at 1:30, council will hold budget hearings for the Office of Community Health and Safety, Bureau of Administration, and Bureau of Police chaired by Councilman Coghill. And then on Wednesday, November 19th at 10 a.m., council will hold our Senate Committee meeting. Speaker registration will close at 9 a.m. Then on Wednesday afternoon at 1:30, council will hold a budget hearing for the Department of Public Works chaired by Councilwoman Warwick. Thursday, November 20th at 10 a.m., council will hold budget hearings for the Bureau of Animal Care and Control, Bureau of Emergency Medical Services, and Bureau of Fire chaired by Councilman Coghill. Also on Thursday afternoon at 1:30, council will hold budget hearings for the Office of Municipal Investigations chaired by Councilperson Sharland and for the Citizen Police Review Board chaired by Councilman Coghill. And lastly, Friday, November 21st at 10 a.m., council will hold budget hearings for the Department of Innovation and Performance, which is chaired by Councilwoman Gross. With that, we need a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
Still moved.
Need a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.